Okay, we'll call the meeting to order the Butler County Commissioners. Would you please rise and live in the sound of prayer for all the citizens of this county. Amen? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands its standing, my nation and her our, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Yes, we have a number of people signed in for color comment. When you approach the podium, we'd like to have your name and your municipality of residence, please, and you'll be given three minutes to speak.
I would note that our policy allows us to have ten speakers. We have thirty minutes of public speaking, so the first ten to sign in will be the speaker.
I'd like to make a motion to override that during this meeting because Sunny View is so important to our community, and I'd like to vote on a motion to override that during this meeting.
We have a motion to override the policy. Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
First on the list, Gloria Rogers.
This is to Mr. McCarrier and Mr. Pinkerton. My name is Gloria Rogers and I live in the city of Butler. Okay, in letter to Diego it said that it was disrespectful of Mr. Eckstein giving out the letters because of the wanting to sell Sunny View. It was explained that the residents have disabilities and are a burden to the taxpayers, as the other two county commissioners said, that they want to sell this because this is putting them in debt. It was because of Adolf Hitler in World War II that my father and his brothers went to Germany and fought so that this would not come to this country, that one's like acting as leaders, acting like kings, to not be able to rule because of the democracy that they wanted it to be. When the commissioners have the meetings and they are having these backward, behind-the-door things, it is illegal. There's a thing called the Sunshine Law, federal and state, and all lower branch other governments. You must follow that law, the Sunshine Law. Everything you do, you have to do out to open to these people here. You cannot go behind backs, get bids and everything else for the new buildings and for the new courthouse and sell Sunny View and everything. You can't do that. That's illegal. You're doing things illegal. Richard Nixon was thrown out of office and went down the whole way to Jane Horry. She got out, okay? It can go down a floor there also. Problems. If the municipality goes up against. And like these two here, McCarrier and McPainkerden, they act. And that is the phrase, the right phrase. McCarrier, United Way, Salvation Army. Pinkerton, Shriners, clowns. And the Rotary Club. These are organizations that help people. They are not organizations that take from people or put them down. And these organizations should expel each of you for the acts that you have done. Laugh, McCarrier, but it is true. The facts have shown to these people, people, with each one of you. And only Mr. Eckstein has fought for the people of all Butler County. And you think only of yourselves and your castle, your new courthouse. Well, I'm sorry to call you in.
It's time.
This one's...
Your time is up, Congress.
Hundred-year-old.
Carolyn Graff.
And I would assure you, Gloria, that we do follow the Sunshine Law through the letter.
Oh, shoot, that's what happened.
I'd like to say this, I disagree.
We're all certainly disagreeing.
I disagree with you guys following the Sunshine Law.
Good morning. My name is Carolyn Graff. I am a resident of Jefferson Township and a lifelong resident of Butler County. I have some thoughts about the sale of Sunny View, which I do oppose. I feel that Sunny View is a service to the residents of the county if they can pay, if they cannot pay. The offices of the county government, such as register of wills, recorder of deeds, domestic relations, we're not asking them to show a profit. We're not eliminating them because they aren't showing a profit. And I think Sunny View should be looked upon as a service to the citizens of the county. Also, the employees of Sunny View contribute to the tax base of the county with their real estate and school taxes. They pay an occupation privilege tax, they pay wage tax, they help to support and keep our county profitable. Help us, they help us as they are providing the service. And lastly, I have a concern for any healthcare provider that might purchase Sunny View. We have some facilities that have many, many nursing homes, and that can also be land poor. I'm worried that if someone purchases Sunny View, that they may go bankrupt at some point, and then what happens to Sunny View and the care for our residents? And that's all I have to say, and thank you.
Thank you, too.
Donna Faliker.
Hi, I'm Donna Faliker. I live in the city of Butler. I am strongly opposed to the sale of Sunny View. I have an eighty-six-year-old uncle that I care for, and in the past seven months, he has spent fourteen weeks at Sunny View for two separate injuries in the rehab facility. During his second injury, he initially had to go to Concordia for rehab because Sunny View was full. He spent thirteen days at Concordia and had a horrible experience there. First of all, they wouldn't even take him until they knew how much money he had in the bank. During these thirteen days, I had to go out of town for six days for a wedding, for my nephew's wedding, so I wasn't there physically to monitor his care room those six days. I expressed concern before he left, or before I left, that they had not restarted his medicine for his congestive heart disease. They assured me they would monitor his fluid levels and restart his diuretics when he started showing signs of fluid retention. When I returned six days later, he had gained thirty-two pounds of fluid. He couldn't breathe. We had to take him to the emergency room. They did not give him one water pill the whole time he was in Sunny View, and his ankles were this big. We got to the emergency room, and he was hospitalized for five days. His lungs had to be drained twice. He also had open sores on his buttocks that weren't properly dressed. He begged the doctor when it was getting close to them releasing him, he begged the doctors not to release him until there was a bed open at Sunny View, because while he was there, Sunny View, the rehab facility, was still full. During his time, during the fourteen weeks at Sunny View, his care was exceptional. He never had one bed sore on him. He had major, major problems with bowel incontinence because of repeat episodes of C. diff, but he was always kept clean. Even if they had to come in several times an hour to clean him up, he was always kept clean. They were always on top of his conditions. His fluid levels were always normal. My aunt is currently a resident of Sunny View right now, and I'm deeply concerned about her care. I really honestly believe that the care will deteriorate if Sunny View is privatized. And honestly, one million dollars is not a huge deficit. I work for a major airline that lost billions and billions of dollars and went through two bankruptcies after nine eleven. We survived. We overcame. You owe it to the union to go back to the table. Your negotiations haven't been that long. My company drug out our negotiations for seven years, and we voted down two tenets before we ratified, so you owe it to your union to work out this deficit and keep Sunny View.
All right, thank you.
Georgie Anne Kerr.
I'd just like to comment on that. I can assure the public that we are not going to lose a million dollars. The union has come up with a new offer across that it will put it at break even. Unions came through with a break even offer. The million is, that is not true, okay? That keeps being said, but we will not, if we keep Sunny View, we absolutely will not lose a million dollars. We're at a break even point with Sunny View. The problem's been solved, okay? They say the train left the station. I say pull it back in, okay? It's just not true. Everybody keeps saying that, but it's not true. No problems been solved.
Okay. Hannah?
I'm Georgie Anne Kerr. I'm the chair of the Democratic Committee in Butler County, and I also live in Lancaster Township, where we resided for over forty years. Today, I'm presenting a resolution from the Butler Democratic Committee. The following resolution by the Butler Democratic Committee poses the sale of Sunny View Nursing and Rehabilitation Center. No sale of Sunny View. The Butler County Committee, whereas two commissioners desire to sell Sunny View for stated reasons of a loss of a million dollars per year, whereas two commissioners have not seen fit to have an impact study done on the sale, whereas two commissioners have not had a public hearing on the subject of the sale, whereas there has not been a referendum on the subject of the sale, whereas SEIU, Service Employees International Union, has presented a package of contract modification that they claim will offset the million-dollar loss, and that offer was never discussed or quantified. Whereas, we at the Democratic Committee desire an ethical employer and desire honest and fair labor relations with the various unions who represent our employees, whereas those two Republican commissioners willingly spent ten million dollars a year on incarceration of law-abiding breakers but are unwilling to invest a million dollars in care for the less fortunate law-abiding among us who have come to call Sunny View their own. Whereas, we, the Democratic Committee, willingly pay taxes to ensure that all members of our community have dignity and the joy in their lives. Therefore, we at the Democratic Committee of Butler County insist you slow this juggernaut down, seek input from the community, treat our employees with more respect, and search for a way to continue a valuable service to Sunny View.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will try to keep this brief. David Kerr, Lancaster Township, I'll try to keep it brief because there are a number of people who want to speak today. Sunny View is nothing less than a treasure owned by the people of Butler County. It is a jewel that speaks to six generations of decency and decent people living in Butler County. It began in nineteen hundred as a poor farm. It wasn't the first poor farm, but the movement of poor farms across the country and its hundreds and hundreds of poor farms in various counties were the foundation for what evolved into county governments administering human services in this country. We're part of that evolution. During the Depression, many of those poor farms were closed. When Social Security came in in nineteen thirty-five, more were closed, and they changed their focus. No longer was it just the indigent as they had the flockers among us, they looked at mental health issues and things like that. The farms became institutions, and Butler County can be proud of the history that they had, that they had doing that. During the sixties and seventies, those institutions began to be closed, and as the population in those homes decreased, two other populations went up, the homeless population and the prison population. I hope that Sunny View is around for six more generations, and I hope Sunny View continues to take the lead and be the example of the kind of care that people can be given. We should be proud of Sunny View, we should keep Sunny View, and we should be proud of the employees of Sunny View. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Denny Scott.
My name is Denny Scott. I live in Penn Township, and I'm also a member of the Butler County Democratic Committee. I'll be brief. The resolution that Georgie Anne presented earlier says it all, as far as I'm concerned. Sunny View is an asset that we need to protect and preserve, and there is no real reason for selling it. One of the roles of government is provide safety net for our citizens. It seems that two of our commissioners have forgotten that, and that has changed. It seems like there may be a hidden agenda here for the sale. I don't know, but I sure like to find out. I want to thank Commissioner Eckstein for all his hard work in fighting this sale. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, before I call the next person up, this person has listed their residents as Cannonsburg, and our policies are to provide an opportunity for the residents and taxpayers of Butler County to speak. I would like your ruling on whether we should allow the other Butler County residents that have signed up to speak, or whether you would like to go ahead with this person.
Is the person Tamara, the union head, or?
No, Kim Patterson.
I think, I think that...
I would be willing to give my time to the public. Thank you very much. The next person, then, is Terry Penrow.
Good morning. I can't do this. Commissioner McCarrier, I originally had a thing in here because I was going to publicly apologize to you because your rant was directed at me last meeting about some of the money that I felt was taxpayer money that was going to other things, but you know what? I can't apologize to you today, and I'll tell you why. November fourteenth, you guys were at the Board of Governors meeting, and there was a lot of residents, Mrs. Schott was one of them, that attended this meeting, and they wanted to continue to hear Mr. Eckstein speak, and you guys overturned that meeting. And the things that I had people coming up to me and asking me afterwards, they sat there and they watched you two laugh and smile, and that hurt them. You guys are professionals. You're commissioners. You're supposed to act like professionals. It's not a laughing matter, especially to people like her. This is their home. Why on earth would you feel it necessary to sit up there and laugh? That's totally unprofessional. Take a look around. These people are here, all taxpayers. They all pay your salaries. They expect our commissioners to act like professionals, and you have not throughout this whole process, and it sickens me, and I'm packed. I made sure that neither of you get voted in again.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
And all of us in this city, my people, we take the steps from current city of LA and I want to support that township for three years since LPM, and I think it is very rude and very unfair to play with this place. This is their home. This is where they've lived for years and years and years. Some of these people have all the fun, some of these people have other kinds of fun. This is one of the things that can swing these residents into an elective meeting. This was situated for poor people. They get the tough part and otherwise, what if I utilizing the LPM at Butler County and doing IVs, YK and RN, or NRD, the community center, IV, whenever our nurses are licensed practical nurses and use these kind of things. And also, the licensed practical nurse in some other nursing homes are also unit managers. Why pay an RN to be a unit manager when you can cut costs that way? And I'm sorry if I'm tramp on any of those, I don't mean to do that, but you can cut costs that way. And I'm just saying that these folks need a home, and why not let Butler County be a home? Sunny View is a wonderful nursing home, and it always has been, and it always will be. And fellas, just like I said the last meeting, we aren't getting any younger, and maybe at one time, we would like to have Sunny View as our home. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mandy Wolfert.
Hi, I'm Mandy Wolfert from Summit Township. I'm also a nurse today at the Sunny View. I know me getting up here is not going to change your minds, but I owe it to my residents. You guys are so cold-hearted about the poor and the elderly residents of Butler, the people who voted you guys into office. You're throwing them out of their home. The people you as county leaders are supposed to take care of, these are the people you were turning your back on. You guys say that the residents, that the new owners have guidelines to follow, that the residents can stay. You can't make the new owners keep the residents, the staff, the wages, or the benefits. You two will never have to worry about where or who will take care of you because you are not among the four of Butler. You get top-of-the-line care because you can afford it. Do you realize how many people you are affecting by selling Sunny View? The residents, their families, over two hundred employees and their families. That's over a thousand people of Butler you guys are supposed to be taking care of. It's the holiday season, and we're all supposed to be stressing out about what your cook for dinner is, about our Christmas shopping, not about where our moms, dads, or grandparents are going to be in a few months, or where we are all going to find new jobs that will support our families. This is stuff you two never have to worry about. I just don't understand how we offered one point one million dollar in concessions and you two won't even look at it. It's either your way or no way. You owe it to the Butler County residents, the people who voted you two in to stop this sale. What do you have to lose from this by accepting our offer? You have nothing to lose.
Again, we have a situation where the next person on the list is listed as City of Pittsburgh.
I'll give my time to someone else.
Next, Tim Kelly. Oh, I beg your pardon, I'm sorry. Mark Peniski? Okay, Tim Kelly.
Good morning, Commissioners. As a citizen of the United States, I feel that your actions are total censorship. You limit people to three minutes, and that's not enough time to really discuss anything in depth. There's a few things I'd like to bring up. One particularly is your behavior. It's tyrannical, in my opinion. You made the comment, Commissioner McCarrier, that, according to the Butler Eagle, and I quote, "Government has no business in a nursing home." Okay, why are we in the pool business? Why do we do swimming pools? Quarter of a million dollars for sidewalk repair at Alameda? I wonder what the people in Evan City and Cranberry think of that support Edco Park? Not too well. You guys gross over sixteen hundred dollars a week. The average worker at Sunny View in the dietary department, it takes them over a month to gross that. You've got an entity that grosses over twenty million dollars a year, and you guys can't make it work. The union, we've heard it time and time again, a million dollars in concessions. You can't even go back to the bargaining table. Tyranny, dictatorship, those are two words that come to mind of that behavior. You can't fix Alameda Road, but you can sure log all the timber out of Alameda Park for profit. You can sell the corner of the property owned by Sunny View as a lease to Sheetzes to make more money. You can sell the mineral rights of the property of Sunny View, but you don't want the building or the cost of the building. It's ridiculous, and you're going to do it for what? For twelve-car parking space in a government building where you're going to leave two floors vacant? You want to build a four-story building, leave two floors vacant, and put twelve cars in at a cost to us taxpayers at one point two million dollars for your parking garage, where you're building it right beside a parking garage? And where you said it was a great thing for the city of Butler to put in the parking garage, according to the Butler Eagle, of two-hundred-and-twenty spaces? So why do we need your twelve? This is like, you know, really stupid thinking upon your part, and if you're going to continue to act like tyrants, I wish you would heed the warning of an ancient Latin saying that the state of Virginia adopted as their motto. Sixsemter tyrantis.
Okay, we have minutes in our previous meetings of November fourth to November seventh. Is there a motion approved these minutes? Make a motion we approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a motion on a second. Ladies and gentlemen, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and then to approve.
We have no old business today, Commissioners. We do have one presentation. This is a certificate of compliance for the Butler County prison. We will present this to Warden Rick Schaefer. The letter of commendation reads, Dear Rick, it is our pleasure to congratulate you and your staff on earning the 2013 certificate of compliance. You are commended for your exemplary efforts in operating our prison so efficiently in accordance with the statewide correctional standards. It is our understanding that no deficiencies or citations were reported by the Office of Corrections of the Pennsylvania Department of Corrections. Inspector Joseph A. Ferranti, Pennsylvania Department of Corrections, Office of County Inspection Services, conducted the inspection on August sixth, 2013. The results of this inspection revealed that the facility has achieved one-hundred percent compliance with Title Thirty-Seven, Chapter Ninety-Five of the County Correctional Institution's Administrative Standards Regulations in the Facility. Your staff's commitment to compliance is apparent in the prison's maintenance of an audit-ready status. You and your staff should be proud of such accomplishments. We understand that receiving the certificate of compliance can only be earned through much hard work and dedication to excellence. Because of this achievement, we understand that the prison is exempt from the routine one-year inspection cycle, and the next cycle will not be until 2015. We encourage you to maintain this exemplary level of compliance. Thank you and congratulations on a job well done. Signed, William L. McCarrier, Chairman, Dave Dale Pinkerton, Vice Chairman, and James Eckstein, Secretary. The Commissioner has a presentation. And the Commissioner has a presentation.
Mr. Wolfert, guys, everybody. One second.
I'll break his chair. Show the prison. We're honored to give him this and to you and your staff. You folks have been doing a fantastic job down there, and we appreciate all the effort, particularly in this. We're proud of what you and your staff have done. And if you'd like to say something, I'll read it. It's a real honor. We don't know how many other counties got this, but it's not your responsibility. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Rick. Here's the word. Yep.
Again, thank you, Commissioners. I do appreciate this. I do want to say achieving this was not even possible without our tremendous staff that we have down there, everyone from our officers to the captains, the treatment staff, and especially the maintenance staff. It takes a lot of people to accomplish this 100% compliance, and it's not something that you just take care of the week before the inspector comes. It's 365 days a year that these people are going above and beyond and doing their job well done down there. So although I'm here to be the face of the prison and accept this, those people down over across the street are the ones who deserve this. Also, a special appreciation to our Policy and Procedure Committee. A large portion of the inspection process has to do with policies and procedures. We had put together a committee of officers and overseen by our intern to basically go over all of the policies and procedures and revamp them, and they pretty much had to rewrite a lot of them. And the inspector actually was so impressed with them, he asked if we could use some of our policies to share with some of the other counties that were struggling with some of their policies. So once again, I would like to thank my staff over there at the prison because they're the ones that actually are doing the job every day. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Under New Business, first item is Court Administration, Tom Coleman.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm Tom. I have two things for consideration this morning. First, we're seeking approval of a contract amendment in the Labor Toxicology Services to add three additional analysis panels to the testing that we conduct in the adult rotation other than pretesting the suboxone quantity in the steroids, and asking for your approval of this contract amendment.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No?
The second request is we're looking to enter into a contract with Internet probation and rule control incorporated for the managed internet monitoring and control services and sex offenders. This would permit our probation officer assigned to supervision sex offenders the ability to monitor computers at home and to put on computers through the kinds of restrictions that will be required through forms of court questions. And this will often be discussed. I would be happy to. I have two of that contract.
I'll make the motion. I'll second it. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next, under Emergency Services, CASMAP. We're seeking your approval to enter into an access and data sharing agreement between the Pennsylvania Department of Corrections and the Butler County Local Emergency Planning and this is for the Pennsylvania Tier 2 system. We ask your approval.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No?
Next, under Human Services, Children and Youth Agency, Joyce Sainsbury.
Good morning, Joyce.
Good morning. I have two items to worry about your consideration today. First, I'm asking approval for a contract with Dick Moga to conduct administrative reviews for clients who are asked to leave their homes during an investigation of a deserted land. We need to offer them a hearing to discuss their complaints about this process, do a lease subpoena court case in another county. He will be paid $90 per hour, but we are only estimating a handful of these cases to be.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No? Motion carries.
Second, I'm asking approval for us to lease or purchase three vehicles from the state contract. The total purchase price is $93,000 for the three vehicles. So I'm asking permission to purchase these vehicles for the CYS plant.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second? Second, is there a discussion?
Yes, I'd like to discuss this issue. Ms. Sainsworth came up with this proposal last year or the year before. I disagree with this. These vehicles are 2006. Look, the county has a policy that you have a car 100,000 miles or 10 years, okay? That's my job to treat everybody the same, whether it be the sheriff's department, or assessment, or wherever we're at in the county. These vehicles have 53,000 miles on it, 49,000, 56,000. I do not care for state taxpayers' money, federal taxpayer money, or county taxpayer money. I have to do my due diligence, and I do not think it is at all reasonable to change these three vehicles with those low lollies and surface rust on the undercarriage. I went out and drove one of these vehicles the other day. I went and asked for the keys, drove it, it drove beautiful. I did notice that the three vans didn't have winter tires on for the employees. I think that's really important, those winter tires on all line vans. Now, I was told that the department has in charge of winter tires or to ask to get winter tires on the vehicles. I do not agree with not having winter tires. I have all the winter tires on my car. So I would put winter tires on that van, but I'd like to thank the employees. The van was in great condition. I looked on the inside, and it was really unbelievable. They were all in nice shape, they're vans with three rows of seats on, they're expensive. This is a $93,000 expenditure. I disagree with it. Now, some of the other people are going to, Commissioners are going to tell you, some other department can use these vans. But maybe the other department would be better with a Ford Focus that got 30 mile to the gallon, like my wife has. I mean, one of the vans could be used for another department, the prison. I thought that was, I'd be willing to make a compromise on that. But I think the county has to stop doing these expenditures for no reason. The public expects more from the Commissioners across the board. Let's utilize our money wisely. These vehicles have 50,000 miles, that's a 2006, they're in good condition. I'll get it inspected myself if it needs be. I ask if there was a written report about the things that are wrong with the vehicles to put the employees in danger. Ms. Sainsworth said that she doesn't like to put her employees in danger. Well, that insinuates, since I'm on the other side, that she's insinuating that I do. I disagree with her policy there. At Monday's meeting, she said that to me. I really care about all the employees, no matter where they are in the county. Get the snow tires, keep the van. Thank you very much.
Okay, I think there's a little misunderstanding here. Perhaps Mr. Eckstine doesn't fully understand how this works. The money for these vans comes from the state appropriation to children and youth. This is a line out of budget in Joyce's budget, which she submits to the state. And if we take these vans off, this money will not be there next year, or the next year, or the next year perhaps. These vans are not going out of service. These vans will be rolled over to the county. I know one will go to facilities and operations. They have a van which is 10 or 11 years old and put a lot of miles on and in pretty bad shape. Another will probably go to the prison, and another will possibly go to assessment. So these vans will remain in the county for another five or six years. We're not throwing them out or selling them. They are good vans, there's no question about that, but the fact that we have to keep this cycle going to keep this money coming from the state. And the state, this policy was set up quite a few years ago by Billy O'Donnell, I believe. And this money, if we do not buy these vans for the children and youth, then we'll end up buying new vans with county dollars for facilities and operations, or assessment, or the prison. This way, we have the state buying these vans for us, and we get half the use out of their money, and then we transfer them over to the county.
I'd like to say this. I did explore this extensively. I drove the cars, looked at them, I'm only getting inspected. There is no mistake there. There is no misunderstanding. I have my point of view, and Mr. McCarrer has his. If this gets taken off the agenda, she brought it here one or two years ago to have it done. Why wasn't the money removed off the agenda then? She made the same claim a year ago or the year before.
No, Jim.
When was that?
The money, yes, the time was paid, and the money is in the budget every year because we buy these on a three-year program. Is it three-year?
Well, it's three or five.
All right, three- or five-year program, so a portion of the money is in the budget every year from the state. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, George, very much.
Under Human Services, Community Action and Development, Janine Kennon.
Good morning, Janine.
Good morning.
We are requesting to gratify the submission of the fourth amendment to the 2013 Community Services Block Rank State Contract to the Department of Community and Economic Development. DCD awarded us an allocation of $261,494 for calendar year 2013, but only committed a contract of this on a quota basis. So this amendment is actually for two-year contract, new contract amount of $531,494. I ask your approval.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
We are requesting to amend the following Community Services Block Rank subcontract for 2013. Victim Outreach Intervention Center, increasing their contract by $7,500 for a new total contract amount of $39,500. In Center for Community Resources, we are also increasing their contract by $7,500 for a new total contract amount of $42,500. Term of contracts remains the same, January 1st through September 1st of 2013. I ask your approval.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it. I apologize, I didn't ask this on Monday, but on voice, where's that next to Monday go? I didn't, I forgot to ask you this every day.
We use this funding to help with the case management services for the shelter, emergency violence shelter.
Okay.
Pay for salary benefits of the case management. Part of it.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
All in favor, the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No? Motion carries.
Thank you. First item, under Commissioners, we're asking for the adoption of Resolution 2013-21 to advertise for sale by bid a car lift and motor pool that was recently replaced. We ask your approval.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Discussion?
Discussion. I, the, this lift, there's something wrong with the, I'm going to vote against this sale. I'd rather it be disposed of. There's something wrong with the safety mechanism on the lift. The attorney has assured us that you can sell it as is, but I'm going to vote no on this because I don't want to take the liability for the county, and I don't think I'd do it for myself with construction equipment. I wouldn't sell construction equipment if it's affected someone else, no matter what. So I'm going to vote no on this, but that's why.
Okay, I think when the person buys this, they're buying it as is, and they recognize that there is a problem, and it's up to them to have that problem fixed. Excuse me. And they'll also be told what that problem is.
Definitely.
And those in favor, the motion then, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Next, for seeking your approval of the public media dates for 2014, including approval to legally advertise the schedule.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No? Motion carries.
The next item is regarding the Housing Authority. We've been asked by the Housing Authority to delay passage of this resolution and to resubmit it at the December 4 meeting, so I ask for permission to tables.
Is there a motion to table?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No? Motion carries.
Thank you, that's all for New Business.
Is there a motion to approve the budgetary transfers?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the lift hires?
I'll flip that motion.
I'll second it.
Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the travel request?
I'll second it.
Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the requisition?
So move it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the check register?
I'll make that motion.
So move it.
Second. Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. McCarrer.
Yes.
I beg your pardon for interrupting. There is one final item under Commissioners that did not get on the agenda but was on the Monday agenda setting, which is permission to.
Issue an RFP for tax collector bonds. Every four years, we put that out to the.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion carries. Jim?
Okay. A few of the constituents today during the public comment section voiced a few of my concerns today at speech, so some of the, a few things will be redundant, but I appreciate, overall, I don't think it hurts to repeat it. I would like to thank Bill McCarrer for some of his actions that took place at the last meeting. Number one, he left me finish my speech about Sunny View, a very emotional, important issue to me. I went two minutes over the 10-minute time limit imposed by the ruling party here. So I appreciate he did that. Number two, he actually listened to what I said in my statement and took down some notes. I watched this on TV after the meeting. I recorded on my own camera and I watched it. He laughed when I said I was a leader and insinuated that he wasn't because he was selling Sunny View and because other counties were selling their nursing homes, and he was just falling asleep. I put that in there knowing he would like what I wrote. I did that on purpose. And number four, I'm most grateful he didn't smirk, smile, laugh, rock his chair, and gloat the whole time I was speaking as Dale Pinkerton does. Thank you, Bill. I think the public would find these actions respectful, I did. Next, I'd like to reflect on the new accusations Dale Pinkerton leveled against me two weeks ago. The issue is Sunny View and saving it for our community, and he changed the whole agenda, his agenda at the meeting, to me and what I did. And I'd like to comment about that and interject about Sunny View in my comments. And instead of explaining to the constituents at the meeting why you're selling Sunny View, you attacked me and my personal assistant. Why you continually talk about and belittle my assistant is way beyond me. I have respect for your assistants, and I never talk about them, okay, at public meetings. It's ridiculous. I don't talk about them, not at public meetings either. First, Dale's quote, "Eckstein blames us or others for problems in Sunny View." This is a fact. The 2004 pension grab averaged over $1 million liability to the ARC or retirement payments over each of the last 10 years. This 50% increase was perpetuated by Glenn Arson, Scott Lowe, Jim Kennedy, Diane Marburger, and Jack McMillan. The five of them all felt they were entitled to a 50% increase because the state workers were awarded a 50% increase by then Republican Governor Tom Ridge. Now, is that a conservative value there, 50% increases in pensions? The big five knew they were entitled to the 50% increase. The county elite, the elected officials, all gave themselves retroactive 50% increases for the demise of Sunny View. They felt they were entitled. They had a choice of taking a 20% increase. That was on the table, but no, they went for the 50. Take all you can get. Did they make the public, did they make the public aware what they were doing to the media? No, they didn't do that. They wanted to hide it so they could pass it and say they were holding public meetings with no press. Did any one of them call the press? Did any one of them call the press? No, they didn't. Did they care that to taxpayers without to pay up to twenty percent? Twenty percent of the employees' wages go to pension funding at Sunnyview. I mean, jeez, the new company just don't hand out the pension money, you're making twenty percent. That's where the money's going, not for managing Sunnyview. No, they didn't care. Did they care about the long-term ramifications when they did this to Sunnyview? No, they did not. How do I know about the pension grab? I have the median audio tapes in my possession. They were gleeful to take the grab. Gleeful, on tape, partying, you know, just gleeful. These actions directly and most single-handedly perpetuated the demise of Sunnyview. That's a million dollars a year over the last ten years, okay? Second, Dale's quote, Eckstein doesn't seem to understand business models. What a condescending and arrogant statement from a condescending and aloof elitist. I put myself through trade school. I owned and paid for my own twenty-seven-hundred-square-foot home at thirty-five years old. I was a self-employed businessman for over thirty-four years in construction. I didn't even apply for a job, I found my own work. I worked hard to get elected as county commissioner and took four years to learn a job on my own time and expense and through open record requests and attending meetings for over four years. As a commissioner, I went through the Academy of Excellence program at CCAP. I just finished the one of it, three times faster than Dale Pinkerton. Three times faster. I don't think he's graduated yet, but I don't know, he can tell us. And I'm now enrolled in a VANS certification program. I believe I'm the only commissioner in Butler County to ever complete the programs. The rest must believe they are so smart already, they don't need to learn. Really? I just graduated from papers pension certification program. I tested out, I just didn't attend, I passed test. I am tied, I'm tied with this achievement with the Mercer County Commissioner, who asked me an accountant, as being one of the first two commissioners in the state of BA to be a public certified pension professional as a county commissioner. There's two of us in the whole state. Dale thinks I'm a boo and tells it at every meeting, it's sickening. With these accomplishments, Dale Pinkerton just keeps running me down over and over, belittling me, and declaring how special he is. He's a legend in his own mind. Third, Eckstein and Amberstall have wasted doing research in good government, wasted the taxpayers' money. Jim Eckstein has cost the county money, this is his claim, you know, their claim is, Bill was in on this too. Jim Eckstein has cost the county money by not taking a pension and not taking county health care. He takes the twenty-two-thousand-four-hundred strip in, they take the seventeen thousand. I'm costing the taxpayers money. In four years, I have savings of a hundred and ten thousand dollars for the community. Do people really believe their prop, that Peggy and I are costing the county money when I don't take a pension and health care? Really? When they take as much as they can get? Peggy and I cost the county nothing, an illegitimate cost during the last two years. Dale Pinkerton is suing me for nothing. Judge Edgar turned him into the AG's office, not me. He's doing it for fun, and is damn proud of it, smiles about it all the time. An employee filed a claim against me and declared, I was declared innocent, not guilty, unfounded allegations. I can't take, county employees can say anything about you. They can say anything about any elected official. I was not guilty. I didn't do it. Dale Pinkerton and Bill McCarron prosecuted that unfounded claim. I was found innocent by the AG's office creating a newsletter for the informed county residents. Now, we wouldn't want to have a newsletter to inform county residents, now would we? Okay? To participate in the Sunshine Act. They believed that was an illegitimate use of county money, and I did it at Peanuts. Bill McCarron turned in those unfounded charges to the AG's office, not me. He cost the county money, and the Attorney General's office. Peggy and I have cost the county more money, this is a really hard one. Peggy and I have cost the county more money than their opulent twelve-and-a-half-million-dollar building, plus the financing. Then you throw in the hundred thousand per spot, fifteen indoor parking spots. Hundred thousand, a hundred thousand dollars a spot. Our constituents, a lot of them don't have houses that cost that much, and they're doing it for eight-hour-day parking spots. It's unbelievable, elitism. Last but not least, Dale Pinkerton said I have no solution for Sunnyview's financial problem, just criticism. Not true. Bargain with the union in good faith and accept their latest ratified proposal. That will solve the problem. That is my answer, to give Sunnyview a balanced budget. Now, you stated again and again, you, the reason you want to sell Sunnyview was cost. The problem is solved, we worked out the dilemma, we came up with a solution, that's what government does, solve problems, not create them. Now the union has met that roadblock. You came up with a new excuse, the train has left the station, the train's gone. This is a pitiful excuse. It's unconscionable to the residents of Sunnyview, their families, the employees. You two are proud of the destruction of this county's safety net. Proud! Dale said that people will rally around this. You're proud of it. This action against our elderly, those with dementia, Alzheimer's, mental illness, or disabled, was premeditated. It was premeditated, these actions. If it wasn't premeditated, we solved the problem, the problem is solved, then if it's not, you know, then let's fix it and settle with the union. And the, this is premeditated, unconscionable, and despicable. If there is a fast track to hell, you choose to ride in a bullet train, good luck on the ride, okay?
Best time.
Thank you very much.
I actually have three things. I always like to do something positive, so first of all, as a result of friends and family promotion that the county participated in with First Energy Solutions, there were one-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-two homes that enrolled in it, which gave six-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty dollars to the county, and six-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty dollars will be divided among the municipalities in our county. And I, for those of you who took advantage of the program, I hope you are seeing the savings in your electric bill that I have. On another subject, Sunday morning at around 7:00 AM, my wife and I were on our way to church and saw something I believe is worth mentioning. It was pouring down rain that morning, our working, out working in the rain were three Armstrong truck crews putting up Christmas decorations. Every year, these men and women volunteer their time and effort for this thankless job which brightens our streets and brings such joy to many of us as we see the beautiful lights while traveling through downtown Butler. Also, Armstrong donates all the equipment for this undertaking. Our community is truly blessed to have companies such as Armstrong and dedicated volunteer workers on their, on their, on our behalf. Again, their employees do that as a contribution to the people of Butler County. Thanks to all of you for a job well done and making Butler County reflect so well this beautiful holiday season. I don't know what I've ever done to Jim Eckstein, but he certainly hasn't mic'd us for six years, okay? At the last Commissioners' meeting on November seventh, Commissioner Eckstein reported that five and three-quarter million dollars was purposely left off the balance sheet to continue the myth that Sunnyview must be sold for financial reasons. He said the public was being deceived. Folks, the only people being deceived are the ones who continue to listen and allow this man who doesn't understand government financial process, to mislead them by his own inaccurate information and conspiracy theories. Let me give you an example of such. I quote, "The three-quarter million dollar windfall from the mineral rights at Sunnyview was diverted to the general fund by Pinkerton, Kennedy, and Lockheiser." As written on his Eckstein Sunnyview report, folks, mineral rights, dollars are county dollars, and of course, all county dollars naturally go into the general fund. I believe Commissioner Eckstein is mistakenly thinking that these are Act 13 funds which are to be deposited into a separate fund at times. In this case, as per mineral rights, they are not. There's no conspiracy, there's simply a commissioner who doesn't understand government accounting, and this can always be verified by our County Controller's Office. The same situation applies to the five-million-dollar grant provided by the state for capital projects to be used at Sunnyview. The CCAP grant was only to be used for the purpose of making capital projects improvements at Sunnyview, which we did in an appropriate manner. This state funding was not to be used for operating budgets, or to erase deficits, or to balance any budget years. Again, these dollars can all be verified by the Controller's Office, and no county dollars were used at any time. Folks, there is no deception going on. Time after time, Commissioner Eckstein has done a gross disservice to the public by misleading them with inaccurate information. When is the public going to get tired of the antics as we are and decide this official has no credibility in what he says or in his claims of what he does? Commissioner Eckstein claims that we, Bill and I, disrespect senior citizens, the poor, the disabled folks. Bill and I are senior citizens ourselves. Even by twenty years on Commissioner Eckstein's own age, senior citizens are our peers, our fellow neighbors, people who know us and the men we are know better. They know we are directly involved in numerous organizations on our own personal time that helped to raise funds for numerous charities that benefit children, senior citizens, the poor, the disabled. Our action and history speaks for themselves in this regard. Finally, I want to address Commissioner Eckstein's comparison that this situation is another "save my hospital" campaign. It is not. Folks, the situation with Sunnyview is an entirely different set of circumstances that has an entirely different analysis of business model and a different point in time. Commissioner Eckstein might like to live in yesteryear, but as real leaders, Commissioner McCarron and myself must look forward and move the county in the right direction for the future, and continue to do the best for our county. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just, I'm going to be very, very brief. I would just like, excuse me, to refute the three things that Jim said. First, he said that I turned him into the AG's office for doing things on the county time or the county copy machine, whatever. I never, you can check with the AG's office, I never filed a complaint of any kind with the AG against you, Jim. Secondly, he said that he respects our assistance. If that's the case, why did he vote against Kim Geyer to be a board trustee member of Butler County Community College? Kim is in her second term there, she has proved to be one of the most valuable members of that board. Her experience in the school, in the school board, her experience and knowledge of people in Harrisburg has proved to be an asset for the community college that is unsurpassed, and yet he says he respects her, but he voted against her. And yet he comes and asks her for favors. He claimed that he was innocent on this charge filed by one of our employees, and this is true. He was declared to be innocent of any criminal charges. However, he didn't tell you much, the last part of the report said, it said that if his behavior continues in the same mode, it will cost the county a lot of tax dollars in the future, and it has. That concludes my report. Time for the press. Kayla?
I have no questions today, thank you.
Tom?
I'll wait till after the meeting, thank you.
All right, motion adjourned. So moved. Is there a second? I'll second it. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.
I'd just like to make a formal invitation to everyone, including the Commissioner of[1793.72]